Okay. I will go ahead and call our August work session to order. Madam Flir, if you would kindly call the roll.
Mr. Coe.
Here.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Perrin.
Here.
Mr. Dwyer.
Here.
Mr. Reed.
Here.
And Ms. Amon.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Welcome, everyone. Welcome to our virtual audience. We have a really packed agenda today. We're doing interviews in closed sessions for clerk of court, clerk of court, clerk of council. But I asked Longwood representatives if they would come and speak to council briefly this morning about Longwood's reopening plan. And we have Justin Pope, who is Vice President and Chief of Staff, and Matt McGregor, who is sort of leading the COVID effort at Longwood. So, Justin and Matt, if you would come forward, we will be happy to hear from you this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. And I've actually brought, we have a guide, an updated guide to fall reopening, and we've shared with families and students that has kind of a pretty precise explanation of how everything would work. I'm eager for you all to be armed and answer questions that you may get. So I'm happy to leave us with you. I can pass it out now. I don't know how there's a shooter. I think by sharing that, I may find some details in there and at least make sure we have plenty of time for questions and answers. Thank you very much for having me. Matt is Associate Dean of Wellness at Longwood and very involved in the really intensive planning that we have undergone this summer to prepare for, to bring students here with a lot of precautions in place. As of right now, of the 15 Virginia public universities, all are planning for some form of in-person learning, often mixed with some hybrid classes and some online classes. We are as well. We have students back. All of our classes have hybrid elements so that if there needs to be flexibility or if they're temporarily online, they're able to do that much more effectively than in the spring. And probably about 15 or 20% of our classes will be actually online. We've granted a lot of accommodations to faculty that particular concerns about that. But we do feel in-person learning is critical for Longwood. It's critical for our students. It's critical for Farmville. We've worked very carefully with the state. We submitted a 152-page, very detailed plan to the DH and CHEV that went through all the details. There are 26 areas that the state was requiring all colleges and universities to show that they are prepared for. We had that plan approved without any suggestions, feedback, criticisms whatsoever, which I think is a really good sign of people and the process we have in place. One way that may be useful to think about how we're doing this and why we feel like we can is to think about how Longwood is a bit different from a K-12 school. You know, K-12 schools have their own list of concerns and requirements from the Commonwealth that are actually quite different. The Commonwealth has told Virginia higher ed, even if the whole state were in phase two, which is what we're going back to, we're in phase three now, but that colleges, you know, can meet the requirements and the guidelines to open. And so, we are planning to do that even at that base level. And certainly, we all hope that we'll be in phase two at Virginia, and here locally to adjust to that. Colleges, Longwood in particular, we do have more space. We have more buildings than a K-12 school. We have the capacity to do what we've done, which is essentially assign all of our classrooms to the largest spaces we can find for them, which is not something, not the way they usually assign classes, but ensuring that the CDC's social distancing requirements within classes are met. Students actually aren't in class as long in higher education as they are in K-12, so that's a factor. We have put a tremendous amount of effort into just resourcing, reducing the actual capacity of our classrooms. Unfortunately, because we have very small class sizes at Gimlet and only four or five classes at Longwood that typically happen in Longwood over 40 or 50 students, we just have a totally different challenge, a much more manageable challenge than a lot of larger institutions. There's handful of larger classes. I think most of those have moved online. We should have no difficulty meeting the sort of spacing guidelines within classes. We will have a very forceful face coverings policy. Face coverings will be required in all classes at all times, sort of a changeover between classes, and anytime in all residence halls and anytime on campus, you cannot maintain six feet of distance. And that's the Commonwealth of Virginia's guidance. So basically, pretty comprehensive. And we have a tremendous amount of buy-in from students on this. Our students want to be back. They're very eager. They understand that the success of the semester is very dependent on them. I think later today, a statement is going after them from their student government leadership, the language they have come up with, a kind of pledge. It's kind of related to Longwood's honor code, actually, about what it is going to ask of students in terms of doing screen questions, respecting social distancing, and respecting the face mask policies. So, you know, we think that's a difference between K-12 schools and higher ed. And also, you know, frankly, for Farmville, college students are really kind of the lifeblood of this community. We really feel like they've been tremendous steps forward in Farmville in recent years. And we feel a real obligation to do everything we can to manage this transition safely so that we can have college students, students back in the fall. In the documents that have circulated, there's some detail you will find about everything from how we are expanding our dining rooms and changing the dining service to meet social distancing guidelines. We've tremendously upgraded our, the flight group is our main contractor. You know, we've been having a much more regular upgrade, a series of hygiene services. There's details you will find about things like how students will move in. Like a number of institutions, instead of having a move-in day, what they usually do, we're going to stagger it over a period of days to ensure that there's not crowds at a particular time and people can move through freely. There is some information there, and Matt can talk to you. He's been very much at the front lines about the planning, you know, in cooperation with the DH. We talk to constantly in cooperation with Centra and others. Potomac Health, which operates the University Health Center down in Midtown. What do we do if, and frankly, when there are positive cases on campus? And we have a detailed plan to isolate and quarantine students who need to do that and support them. The first possibility, of course, is whether they can go home if they test positive, but we understand they can and that may not be advisable for public health reasons. And so, our residence hall, which we have planned to not go, not have used this year anyway, just for some routine maintenance, is actually a pretty good solution. It has a capacity to go up to 47 students and we have other places that we need to do that. We talk constantly with the DH. We're monitoring the local situation. And one difference between this fall and our spring is that we have a number of things we can do to adjust if we need to. We can tighten further our requirements on events. We can move classes temporarily online. We can move to sort of phase two processes on campus in terms of diet and things like that. And so, you know, in cooperation with them, we monitor the number of cases that we might have, and certainly in close cooperation, consultation with Centra on their capacity. If they were restrained, that could certainly affect our thinking. But we have a pretty solid plan in place. You know, we assume that there will be some cases on campus. We have a big partnership with the DH for contact tracing. We're taking extraordinary steps with our own employees to find accommodations and make sure that we're taking a reasonable precaution in that. We feel this is really important. In-person learning matters tremendously to Longwood. Our future, it matters tremendously to our students. It really had a pretty rough deal out of all this and I think are really genuinely determined to play their part and understand that this semester is going to have to be different than other semesters. A good partnership at Hampton City, I think our basic plans at Hampton City are pretty similar. And both institutions have really strong traditions of student leadership and both have honor codes, which is not actually that common in higher education. And both have student affairs leadership that I think is willing to make sure that anyone who is not showing leadership and practicing good public health practices, that they will be dealt with vigorously, as quite significantly said in the proceedings and reviewed by the Earl today. So, you know, I really do feel our setting, our size, our community, our circumstances give us the tools we need to do this and to do this safely and to be constantly responsive and flexible as circumstances evolve. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have and the community may have given to you.
Justin, we've all heard from various community universities who have expressed concerns. And obviously, the media is still dealing with what universities and colleges across the nation are doing. Will you speak to testing? That's one of the questions that I've ever seen most is Longwood doing testing. I know the answer. Will you speak to the testing issue and the rationale behind it?
Sure. We are following the advice of the DH, which is that mass surveillance testing, I guess is the term for it, before students return is actively not a good idea for public health. It sucks up testing resources. It contributes to backlogs. The test, of course, is only good for that moment so that it gives you a false sense of security. At that scale, there are enough false positives and false negatives that it can do more harm than good in that direction. So, as of right now, I think maybe five or six of the 15 Virginia public universities are trying to execute some form of return testing. I think it's going to be very hard to manage. And the others, I think, are more closely following the guidance of the DH, which is to focus your efforts on being able to provide ample testing for those who need it, for those who are symptomatic, for those who may be contact exposed. We feel good, you know, in partnership with Potomac, who's our provider, and others, that we are able to do that. We are continuing to explore partnerships, you know, with other providers that may, I hope we will have some kind of form of generalized surveillance testing on campus. Not everyone, we just kind of monitor. We are exploring partnerships with that. That is the reasoning behind our testing policy. It seems, we feel it is best for public health. We feel it's actually best for the health of the campus to focus our efforts on testing those who need it and have a quicker turnaround time. So, we think there are positives we can do contact with.
There's also the conversation about the lack of tests themselves. And as you said, there probably will be some positive cases. Do you have availability or access, I should say, to tests? Is there a stockpile of tests or do you know where you're getting the tests from?
Yeah. Potomac, I'll let Matt speak to this too. Potomac feels good about their capacity, you know, going into the year to meet the demand that we have. And we are continuing to work with other places on the possibility of somebody's newer quicker turnaround and not necessarily to activate a point-of-care test. They could be used for kind of surveillance and monitoring. Matt, do you want to? Matt, that's the expert on testing.
Yeah. Through Potomac Healthcare Solutions, they have an already existing relationship with LabCorp, and they do a lot of our different testing, but they've already established this for them. And so, we have, we're able, we get a lot of our test kits from LabCorp, and then we turn around and they do the readings of them. We do have a stock in the office as well that LabCorp can read, but we have built up, I believe we have about 50 now, and we're looking at getting, accumulating more as possible. LabCorp has committed to providing us minimally 20 a week. And so, I'm quite confident that with the stockpile we have, what they're willing to commit at this point, that we can meet the needs of symptomatic individuals that come into the Health Center and any contact tracing testing that we have to do. As Justin did say, we are exploring other options as far as getting a point-of-care kit as well. And that's where you're seeing a lot of the backlog and backware of supplies and the kits. That's a lot of where the struggles are as far as the testing.
Just to add one thing, you know, this is just in the University Health Center, which is a convenient service for our students, faculty, and staff. But of course, many of them go to Centra. You know, I understand Centra is now widening its testing criteria. And so, there are other resources in the community where, of course, some people can't really test it. You know, you can even drive to CVS on Hall Street or the other, I think, and get a test there. So, we're focused on what we can provide to the University Health Center and very confident in that, just because that would be an easy option for our students. But it's not the only, it's not the only testing resource.
Longwood's got deadlines, obviously, for on-campus. And one of the issues that G and I have talked about is off-campus. Is there any plans or how do we address the off-campus housing and what occurs there?
I mean, in terms of behavior or in terms of?
The mask, the whole nine yards.
Yeah. So, I mean, one of the other, to step back, you know, one of the differences with K-12 and we certainly influence our thinking is we know, no matter what we do, a good number of Longwood students are coming back to Farmville anyway that are signed, we said this is off-campus, and they will be here. So, part of our thinking is if students are here, we'd much rather have them sort of be part of the campus system culture. We, you know, we work regulated landlords. We will talk with them. We are providing support and monitoring if someone needs to isolate off-campus. And we are, you know, by having this student-wide pledge and sort of bringing this under the auspices of the honor code, I think making it clear that these behavioral expectations apply to us as Longwood students, not regardless of whether you live on campus or off-campus. But we, you know, Tim Pearson and the Police Chief, Chief Mooney, President Reilly and I have talked a lot about how to make sure that this culture of compliance and good public health habits is respected both on and off-campus. And we will, we will work, we will in any way we need to, to make sure that that's the case. Matt, you're in student affairs too.
I think that we all understand, not just in higher education but across our communities, that this has to be community buy-in for this to work. And that's a part of what, as Dr. Pearson puts out the email here in the next couple days to all of our student population, that's basically what this pledge is saying, is that we know you want to be back here. We know this is an important part of your educational purpose. But this is only going to work if you buy into the practices that have proven to work across the country. So, there is going to be some, there is going to call out the expectations with mask wearing. It is going to call out expectations of social gatherings. You know, the governor's reopen plan was very specific on a couple of different sections, dining, food, social gatherings, recreational sports, fitness centers, all of those things. Got pretty clear guidelines that were put in place. And the expectation that we've established on campus and that we're communicating with the students is that we're going to follow these guidelines. We're going to be a part of what is deemed the appropriate response for these activities.
Yeah. We told our communities, you know, we're not, the goal is not to punish people. The goal is to establish a culture of compliance. I set a good example, and that's why it's so important that the student leadership is involved. But in addition to the pledge, you know, we have new language in our student handbook that puts a light on somebody's requirements, face cover policies, things like that. So, you know, I think through leadership and setting a good example, that would be the most powerful thing. But we have tools through our student conduct and integrity process. If students, if there are students who don't take this seriously, and we will not hesitate to use those to enforce those rules.
Questions?
What about ongoing screening, health screening of the students? I mean, that's going to be your critical factor. Testing's not the answer. It's the screening. They have to be able to answer the questions and identify if they have any potential symptoms.
Yes. So, the student handbook and actually our employee policy now is requiring all students start in before they come to campus and every day, well, here, all employees as well, to ask a series of self-screening questions about fever and other symptoms. And if the answer is that they have any of those symptoms, they are in the state and entering, they contact the University Health Center, not come to class. And if they go to the University Health Center, they need to bring a bag for a couple of days in case they need to go straight to a warranty based on a test result. So, there is that self-screening. And like I said, we are exploring options with the DH and others for some kind of process that they would do with community screening just to catch anything that they're using.
Yeah. I just, it concerns me with the self-screening somewhat, given the age of students. And I mean, I have to screen my staff every day when they come in, and I know that there's questions that they don't answer appropriately. And so, that gives me a little bit of concern because if you don't catch it and if they aren't conscious of some potential symptoms, then it can get out of hand fast and your testing is still, you know, two to six days to get test results back.
Certainly understandable. I think, you know, one of the things that we, our faculty work very hard on is ensuring that there are hybrid elements that are in every course and an attendance policy that makes it clear that if you have symptoms, we won't want you to come in. So, a student should not have any particular incentive to not take that seriously. There's no worry about being able to keep up with your course, but essentially making an assurance to students that if you need to stay out in or to a faculty member, that if you need to stay, stay out, there will be steps in place for you to keep up. So, that's a part of it, that's a part of it too.
Other questions?
Well, there are a little bit more on that because there are a couple of places on campus where students will be directly answering those health screening questions. The student employees on campus who work at the rec center and work in dining hall will get those questions. They also, at the rec center, and I believe the food service has it as well, we have a temperature gun that they, the employees take their temperature every day. And so, we have that place. And then also, any student who comes in to utilize the rec center also has the screening questions that right now they're filling out on the sheet that they don't, that they are doing them. So, as they're coming in there, they're at least physically answering those questions to themselves. And again, like we talked about, the compliance part is they have to be honest, they have to understand. And I hope, you know, this has been going on for six months now, but I hope they get the seriousness of what this is.
Would it be beneficial to have that in the dining halls too? Because, I mean, you're going to have your students without masks that are eager to ask those health questions when they actually go into the dining hall.
I'm not completely sure what, you know, more about what air mark has plans as far as access, other than the space. I know they've spread out some stuff, but I don't know.
Well, we have, I think we printed about, I think it's like 3,000 signs. And CDC guys, face covering signs, different signage on campus. Sure. The goal is that every student, you know, in a residence hall will see at least one, probably more of those signs before they leave the building in the morning, the daily health screening signs. And then every employee will also see that as well. So, they should, you know, encounter, actually have to read those questions at every point. But yeah, we can get you some more information on exactly what the dining hall. All right. The basic, the dining facilities are doing a lot, but one main thing they've done is they've commandeered a lot of space around normal dining areas that's being usually allocated for events and things like that. It shows up all the, some of the larger event spaces beneath the dining room. And they're just spreading out into those spaces to ensure there will be more unique there, the Commonwealth guidelines on spacing. So, it'll just be a lot more space. But there's also a lot of air mark-specific ways they're serving through their own employee departments.
I assume they've gotten rid of buffet style. It's not going to be self-service.
I believe that's correct.
Other questions?
I have a number of questions, but I don't have time for them. But it would be nice for the public to have a better understanding of where the students are going to be tested or screened, rather. And right now, it just doesn't seem like there's enough areas that if they're doing self-screening, I don't know how much confidence that's going to be in people having that. But as you just mentioned, for a number of places, like if they go in, I guess people will feel more comfortable if they know they're going into the classrooms and being screened before they're going into the classroom by someone. Instead of them doing self-screening, it would make me feel better. I don't know about everyone else. But I think there should be a little more screening going on to understand the symptoms before they just do the self-screening. But that's just my opinion.
Sure. I, we've certainly communicated to our faculty that they have the authority, for instance, if someone is not wearing a face cover, to enforce that rule and send it out. They also have the authority if someone appears to have symptoms, despite that, come to class to do the same. So, I think there's a process.
And I understand that, but the temperature means a great deal. And someone will, it'd be nice to know if they took the temperature before they went into the classes or anywhere else.
I think they're doing that in some areas. I think our advice from the DH has been that temperature screening is actually not a super effective screening mechanism. They recommend the particular questions that touch on a number of a variety of symptoms. We do have some thermometers at certain parts of campus. I think they're using, faculty, which have their own set of precautions and spaces in place. They may make use of, but we've tried to follow the DH's guidance carefully and exactly have the.
We purchased 150 of the forehead thermometers that gun-stuff and that you just point to your head and you can keep it up hardly and it takes the temperature. And we have those spread out in various locations. Like you said, at certain locations, they are able to do that. Student employees probably have, because of just the, what we're able to do with employees versus strict general student population, we have the ability to do that a little more so. A lot of the other higher education institutions that we've looked at across the Commonwealth, all of them, I can't say all of them, but the majority of them are relying on the self-reporting of these services. Some of them are asking them to put it into an app before they come to campus every day. Some of them are asking them just to do it. And so, it's been a wide gamut of it. But I think logistically, being able to do that kind of screening, specifically do it with each student at the access of classes is probably bigger than most places are going to be able to pull off. And so, again, it's going to come down to them being able to do it and taking it seriously and performing the self-check.
Other questions on the side of the house?
So, how safe is it going to be with this free off-campus one back contract to landlords and whatever else? I mean, how safe is that going to be?
You know, we certainly have more day-to-day control over students in residence halls. But the idea is that all the spaces on campus should be, from a public health point of view, you know, quite safe for students, even if there's someone who is asymptomatic. So, the spacing guidelines from the CDC, you know, if you're in a classroom, you will be at least six and in almost all cases, eight feet away from someone else in a building with very modern. with very modern HVAC, as all of our buildings have, and you'll be wearing a face covering. So, you know, the idea is that we do everything we can, do self-screening and other ways to get people to stay home if they have, they have any symptoms, if they are asymptomatic, to set up our dining areas and classroom areas and, you know, and manage our student affairs events, you know, with proper spacing if there are any of those, so that the risk is minimal. Because you can't eliminate it, you can't really eliminate it in any setting, but we feel pretty comfortable with a spacing, face covering measures can reduce it substantially.
If the, not assuming the worst, but let's just say, if I have, under the avenues and there's, you know, student housing up there, but all through town, if somebody, if a resident sees a group of folks sitting on a porch, two clothes, no mask, or maybe a yard party or something like that, is there anybody that they can call to report that such that would be enforced?
We do have an on-campus process for precisely that. You know, we can talk about whether there's a way to open that up to the general public. That's just kind of a conduit into the student conduct integrity system. And we, you know, look forward to Chief and Tim Pearson continuing to converse about how exactly they might respond to that situation and the tools they might have to address it. I think it's safe to assume that we are very supportive of addressing it deliberately and able to do that.
So you feel like there'll be something perhaps published somewhere that will give instructions on what to do if you're concerned about?
Yeah, we, that's a really great idea. We've been focused on how to do that for our internal community. I don't know that we have a mechanism in place that's more public than that, but we will develop that possibly.
Out of curiosity, if or when you do have cases of positive cases, will you be posting that somewhere as far as to where we can monitor to see if you should have to have eligibility and exclusion or whatever as far as cases are concerned?
Yes, we will be regularly posting on our website data from the University Health Center, tests that have been administered and positives in the back. And we will publicize where you can find that regularly updated information. We don't, we would not necessarily know if someone has gotten tested, gone home or something like that. We have a really good partnership with VDH, you know, contact tracing, notifications. So we feel pretty good about that, but yes, we are committed to sharing that information properly.
How long would positive be reported on VDH's website?
Not as long with positives, but they would be included in their data. Yeah, we wouldn't be some separate category.
Or it would be in print, that was numbers?
I'm pretty sure that's, yeah.
Yes, that is, but do you, the university itself would have your own posting of your own results if you should happen to have one?
Yes, and I think that's about to go up based on what we've done over the summer. I think they administered the year ninety task with one positive. That's what we're waiting on to continue. Well, it did those numbers, I think they claim to accumulate way and regularly.
I just think it would probably make the community feel a little more safer.
Yeah, and we plan to publicize with the community that that's, so you can find your way of information.
So that is, that's part of the partnership that we've developed with the Piedmont Department Health and we've, in that partnership, they have, obviously, they're very strict with their HIPAA compliance. And so what we will know, what we're, what we've authorized to know basically is any time that a student is positive. So numbers that we're going to provide will be anybody tested at the University Health Center, which will be students, faculty, staff, and it will be the results. Now, what we aren't guaranteed to know because of those HIPAA regulations are if we have faculty, staff that turn positive. And so those numbers, more than, we do have, they can use our University Health Center, but a lot of times they go to Centra or wherever their doctor is. And so it's up to them to share that information with us. And so most of them probably will because they got to figure out how to take their leave for the time that they're in isolation or quarantining. But there's, we can't, we can't obligate them to tell us that there's a positive. But the students, we do have that relationship with VDH where as we're considered an extension for them for the isolation management piece of that, they can share that information with us.
Yeah, and we, VDH always takes the lead in contact tracing, but we have people assigned to help them with any longer specific, if they need to know who was in the class or this student or something like that. And we also, you know, there are important Virginia regulations, you know, that define anyone, employee, employment situation, if they have the contact exposed or taking that space or something.
I don't know if this has been addressed with fall sports. Are there any extra precautions that are happening with travel teams and?
There are a lot planned and I think it's fair to say the whole situation with fall sports is not, is just not known right now whether it will happen or not. I think there's a lot going on with the MCA, the conferences. I think we'll know in the next week or two. There are extensive guidelines just because that is a particular population that spends a lot of time together, have extra precautions. We have just a handful of students who, I guess, have followed those very closely. I think we'll know in the next week or two whether fall sports are going to happen or not.
How about fall graduation?
We will be evaluating that, I think, soon. It, you know, you'll recall, it was pushed back from May until October. Our students really do want to come back to Farno and have an occasion. It is certainly doable with distancing, I mean, the guidance and, you know, we'll talk to VDH about it. It may make, you know, president may not make a decision about that, but we obviously if it's not a problem, it's sensible to do at this point.
Other questions?
When is your first wave of students coming in?
We have, we're coming for new Lancer Days, which is kind of the orientation program, which is going to be very different. It's really just going to be in small pods, I think, starting August twentieth.
Yeah, as long as, that's the new freshman. We do have resident assistants come back this weekend, the ninth, so they come back and they do a training week. That's about, that's less than a hundred students or right around a hundred students that fill that role. Fall athletes are scheduled to come back, I believe it's the seventeenth, eighteenth and nineteenth, whatever the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday that I would give depending on the sport that they're involved with. And so those would be the two main groups that come back. Dining hall usually comes back a little early as well, but then that twentieth is when new students and then that.